of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, we do have a lot to consider tonight. First, we have a public hearing to consider the provisions of economic development incentive are pursuant to GS 158 7.1. At this time, I'm going to recognize our county manager that will facilitate this process. Mr. Jones should be at the floor, sir.
Sure, thank you Chair. Good evening to the board. Your first public hearing you have this evening is a public hearing required as we consider economic development? Oh, sure. I'm sorry, can you hear me? Can everyone hear me now? Sure, thank you Chair. So your first public hearing this evening is in response to an economic development project that the county has been working on. And according to state statutes, if we are considering incentives for a particular project, we need to have a public hearing with regard to that. And so, in this case, I'm going to ask our Economic Development Director, Ms. Duncan, to provide you a bit of an overview before you have the residents or those here tonight speak for the public hearing. Ms. Duncan.
Thank you, good evening everybody. Just checking to see. So Warren County Economic Development has been working with Project YEP since last month, May of 2021. Project YEP is a potential industry expansion in Warren County. Project YEP stands for yarn, Project Yarn Expansion Project. This is a proposed expansion of a Warren County existing industry, Glen Raven, based in the town of Norlina's ETJ, and that's in the Smith Creek Fire District. Glen Raven, the Norlina plant, is a light industrial textile manufacturer that makes synthetic yarn. Project YEP is still in competition against other locations in the states of Alabama, South Carolina, and Georgia. So the proposed expansion projects creating 205 new jobs. And is those are anticipated to be approximately $6.5 million in annual salaries, with an average salary of $31,710. This exceeds the median income for Warren County. Currently Glen Raven employs over 150 residents from our county and the surrounding region. Project YEP, if secured, would invest in real and personal property with a potential value totaling $58,000, or $58 million, excuse me, in real property, and $24 million in personal property investment with a taxable amount, and so that's an $82 million total investment. This project would include the renovation of the existing facility, which was built in 1970, as well as the new construction of additional buildings and new equipment. This project does expect to see an increase in water usage as a water customer, however they do treat their water on-site, so they do not anticipate a major increase in wastewater discharge, other than, of course, what is to be expected from the growth in employees. Company has a fairly low environmental impact, they do not require an air permit from NCDQ, and they do not have emissions, they do not use toxins or solvents in their processing, and they are 100% Warren County landfill-free. So the, the local incentive offering is based on the net public good produced by this project, so this is namely the new capital investment, which is taxable by the county, and the creation of jobs. So please note that the current tax liability of Glen Raven is not impacted. This incentive package is based on the new tax liability generated, that would be generated if we win the project by new development with this expansion. So the, the local incentive package includes a fee waiver of up to $150,000 in county building, inspection, and permit fees, and 10 annual tax grants. The tax grants would equal 60% of the paid tax liability for the year on the new liability. The grant will not be issued until the year's property taxes have been paid. So over the course of this 10-year period, if you look at the projected capital investment and our current tax rate, this would equal out to be a little over $3.2 million, $3,231,706. The amount the county would retain over this 10-year period, and again, this is new revenue, this does not impact their current taxes that they pay, new revenue, the, their effective tax liability to the county would be $2,154,470. So, and then included in a local tax grant would be any local matches should the company decide to pursue any state grant funding. Glen Raven has done business in Warren County since 1984. That means they have been an indispensable fixture of our business community for 37 years, and I know we hope that they will continue to operate and thrive here, so with that, it is my recommendation that you approve this incentive package this evening, and I know you'll be looking at that later, and I can come back and talk to you about it then. Thank you.
Ms. Duncan, before you take your seat, before you take your seat. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, the board will entertain any questions or concerns, comments at this time for Ms. Duncan. Ms. Duncan, I would ask if you would just highlight some things for me. I know at least two times you've shared with us how this tax incentive process is given out. If you would highlight that, in your own words, of course, that there is no money from our current tax base, there is no money that is taken from our fund balance in order to give to this company. This is over a 10-year period. If you would highlight it for me, please.
Correct, sure. So, in the state of North Carolina, local governments can only do what the state says we can do. And so, in the general statutes, there's the Economic Development Act, and local governments are allowed to, in order to compete, especially with interstate competition, we are allowed to offer a certain set of incentives to incentivize that company to, to come here, to locate here, to expand here, what have you. But there are parameters that we have to follow legally, according to state statute, and so part of that is, we are allowed to offer an, an cash grant to a company based on their new tax liability. So it does, it's, they're not able to get any sort of return, or rebate, or whatever words we hear people use, on their current tax liability. So, they have just under a 200,000 square foot facility right now, and 70-plus acres of land, the taxes that they're paying currently on that are not impacted by this. If we secure the project, and they renovate, they build, they make improvements, then the county tax administration will, you know, look at the value of that project, the increase, the value of, tax value of the property will increase, and so the tax grant is based on the increase. So it's a return on their new investment. It will not cause county, or residents' tax dollars to go up, it is simply a, it's based on their paid tax liability. Does that help?
Thank you. Yes, absolutely, and this also speaks to how many jobs is here in Warren County?
So currently Glen Raven employs up a little over 150 folks, and so those jobs will have to be retained, and this will be a creation of 205 new jobs. And so any incentive package that you offer, contract will be developed and signed by both parties, and it's a performance grant, so they have to do what they say they're going to do. So we'll track the creation of the new jobs, the retention of the existing jobs, in order for the grant to be awarded.
Okay. And the $82 million speaks to?
We will track that investment with our tax office.
Okay.
And that, so that, and just so you know, and I have included in your folders, if you look at the spreadsheets that I've, I've included in there for you, you'll see an Excel chart, or a, a breakdown of the full tax liability, the local tax grant, the effective tax liability, and I just want you to know that this has factored in the real property value, that does not depreciate, and then the machinery and equipment, the personal property has a, a schedule by which it depreciates, getting a little outside of, thank you, John. So, it factors in depreciation, so it does not set it across at a blanket rate, it does factor in depreciation for their schedule, for their personal property.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Duncan.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right. What we're gonna do now, thank you, Ms. Duncan, I appreciate that. Ms. Ella, can you tell me how many sign-ups we have in reference to this matter?
Five.
Five. Okay. All right, if you would just call it the first person, please.
Cliff Jackson.
Five minutes, please.
Very good presentation, Ms. Duncan. That was a very good presentation, Ms. Duncan. I answered a lot of questions that I'm sure a lot of people here would be asking, especially if you come to a public hearing. And it's not that I don't trust y'all, but I've seen things come in this very room that were appalling, not from y'all necessarily, but, you know, it's a good thing for citizens to keep an eye on what's going on, and this is the reason I came to this public hearing. I think Glen Raven's an excellent corporate citizen, and they deserve to have help to expand and provide more jobs for our people, and I think, I hope that something like this can also come about for other existing industries and businesses that can help them expand and help them make more jobs. That's because we need the jobs, we need more people, we need more, then we'll need more houses, then we'll need more everything, but thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ella, next, please.
Joe Mann.
Mr. Mann, please.
Good evening. My statements are based on the fact that we were unable to get any information prior to tonight on who, what, when, and where this was going on. It was to be an $82 million investment, it was supposed to be a $3.5 million give-back with $170,000 in waivers of building fees, but, or billing permits, but they wouldn't tell us anything about the person, the phantom, that was behind the curtain. So with that in mind, I'm still gonna read what I had prepared. Commissioners, you asked us to trust you on an $82 million boondoggle. I remember when you attempted to sneak in a coal ash dump, two multi-thousand acre toxic dumps, a juvenile felony halfway house for the five surrounding counties, a racetrack and three gun ranges in residential areas, and let's not forget your coup de grace, your PCB toxic waste dump. Trust you? I think not.
Mr. Mann, thank you for your comment. Ms. Ella, next, please.
Deborah.
Furucio.
Furucio.
Furucio, welcome.
Good evening. Sharla, I'm really happy to hear what this project is about, but I feel like some of the others that maybe the procedure needs to change in that we are asked to digest a whole lot of information, and you did a good job of presenting it, but I'm not an economic expert, so when you start talking about tax liabilities and all this other stuff, my mind sort of goes hazy. And so, to have all this information presented to us in a short amount of time where we can't literally read it and I digest it ourselves, and then to take a vote on it the same night, is just a, a bad way to do business. If you want us to understand what's going on before you take a vote, then you could have a public forum, and I don't see why you should have been worried about a public forum. This is a great industry, this sounds like a great project. I am in no way against it, it sounds like, you know, just what Warren County needs to do, but by putting an agenda description that said "YEP project, public hearing," I don't know what YEP means, all I know is that something's gonna be decided in a very short public hearing, and this goes to the next hearing about noise. The noise ordinance that governs us today was passed in a 15-minute hearing on January 3rd, when we weren't very many people around, so...
Ms. Furucio, I want to interrupt you because I want to stay on this public hearing.
I, I understand, I'm trying to say that commissioners, I'm not saying which commissioners over many years would, it would behoove you to be as transparent as possible, and particularly, what did you have to lose to share with us the information about this project? Because then we would have been cheering it on before we even came to this, but instead, my reaction was, uh-oh, what is this? You know, I, I didn't know. And so I'm just asking you to think about the procedures of how you present stuff to the public, so that we can understand things. As I said, I'm not a tax expert, I don't know about all the incentives Sharla was talking about, but I trust that she's done her homework, I've seen her work before, and she does a good job, and I've only heard good things about Glen Haven, so all of that's good. I'm just asking that you don't have public hearings and make decisions the same night without giving the public the chance to digest the information.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Ella?
Ronaldo Espinoza.
Mr. Espinoza?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Ronaldo Espinoza. Commissioner Davis, last week, when we was talking about the books, and you said that you was gonna call the AG, the Attorney General, to come and look at those books. I would like to invite him.
Ms. Espinoza?
Yes.
This is a, a, a public hearing about Glen Raven.
Well, these people have the right to know how you spend that money, they have the right, ain't they? Do they, Commissioner Davis, do they? When you do, let me know, when I could talk to him too. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ella?
Bobby Espinoza.
I'm sorry?
Bobby Espinoza.
All right. All right, so this coming, any other sign-ups, Ms. Ella?
That's it.
All right. Mr. Jones, do you have anything else to add?
Sure, Chair. If, if you don't mind, we can speak a little bit to our economic development process and how some companies that we're negotiating with require confidentiality, and our public hearing is a way for us to get information out to the public on these projects. So I'll ask Ms. Duncan to help me talk about confidentiality that was required with this project, and, and why we announced what we did the way we did.
All right?
So, I think I said it at our Q and A last meeting, I'll say it again. From my perspective, the exciting thing is, this is a learning curve for all of us, because we haven't had the opportunity for this type of investment in Warren County quite some time. And so I understand that it's a process that we're not used to seeing, but if folks will look statewide, it's a process that you would see in any other county, and it's something that's legally allowed by state statute. And the reason why confidentiality is kept is because we are in fact still competing for this project against locations in other states. And part of the reason for confidentiality is to protect the negotiations that the company might be having with other sites, the negotiations that we're having with the company about the incentive package and, and that kind of thing. So to put all of the details out, to put all the cards on the table prior to the public hearing is, I don't know if you want to say, it's, it's not best practice, it could jeopardize the, the negotiations, it could jeopardize the, you know, incentivizing and the security and winning of the project. So, you know, at, at that point, I, from my own personal vantage point, the, the trust is in the county to, to decide if this is a project you want to go after or not, and then we do the things that we're allowed to do by the state. But the confidentiality is, is not to not give transparency to the citizens, it's to protect the deal. We are still competing for this. In, in order for us to say to the company, this is something we can do for you, we have to have the public hearing, there's a set of parameters, and so it was kept confidential to that point. Is that helpful?
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. Mr. Jones, my comment is this, is that since I've been a commissioner, one of the things I've heard from our citizens is that they want job opportunities, and that has been our focus as commissioners, to facilitate the process in a policy lawful way in order to incorporate and attract different businesses to either come here or expand here, and that is the process that we, we've taken, and that has been our focal point with the Board of Commissioners here. And this actually speaks to the comments, many conversations, I know that each, probably each commissioner has had with the citizens, is that we want more jobs, we don't want our citizens to have to travel outside of Warren County to work for good-paying jobs. So this speaks to that, and this is the process that we've taken, and, Ms. Duncan, you have something to add?
I just want to add too, I think it's important to know, if you, if you heard me say, some of the tax grant could be used for local matches for state grants, so it could be that the state might offer certain incentives on their end as well, and so sometimes in these types of things, confidentiality is required of the local government by the state, okay? So it's, it's not necessarily always a choice, right? It's, it's, when we work with our partners at the state level, sometimes the state's, you know, puts the confidentiality on us as well, and it's all a part of what the state statutes allow.
Thank you. All right. I'm sure that we will speak more of this, because it is further down on our agenda to consider. So, Ms. Ella, we do have, we don't have any more sign-ups, correct?
That's correct.
So ladies and gentlemen of the board, if you don't have anything else to say, we will conclude this portion of the public hearing when we are addressing the incentive package for Glen Raven. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, we're gonna address our next public hearing, and this is to... And this is to hear the citizens regarding an appeal by the neighborhood property owners of the Point Cafe LLC in reference to the point, excuse me, in reference to the permit for temporary variance from the Warren County Norris Ordinance previous granted by the Norris Control Board. At this time, I'm going to recognize our county manager that will facilitate this process.
Thank you, Chair. I provided you, the board, this evening, a list of how we got here tonight for this public hearing. So if you have in front of you, you should see just a memo from me that just says noise permit overview. And so I'll just briefly try to run you through the process just so you have, again, how we arrived here this evening. So the county, as you know, has a noise permit, a noise ordinance, and it allows for the temporary variance from that, which is called a temporary variance permit, if people know that they're going to have events, for example, that would possibly cause them to exceed the decibel levels that are outlined in our noise ordinance. And so we have a noise control permit board made up of the county manager, the sheriff or designee, and the health director or designee. There's an application that an applicant must go through. There's a $25 fee. And we either can provide a denial or a tentative approval. In this case, the noise control permit board met on April 28th. We provided a tentative approval on Monday, May 3rd. And at that point, the applicant has to deliver or mail to each property owner on our tax records that are within a thousand-foot radius of their address. And they have, property owners have five days after they receive that notice to either respond and let us know whether or not they wish to contest the permit. And contest is what happens for the tentative approval. We did receive notice on May 7th from an attorney representing some of the homeowners. And we also received an email from a resident on May 13th indicating that they would be contesting the tentative approval. I also would like to highlight, on May 18th, we also received a report from a resident who was a homeowner in the townhome complex, and he asked why he had not received a notice. And that would be important because we realized we had a bit of an issue that we wanted to correct. On May 19th, we received an affidavit from the point that they had in fact mailed notice to everyone that the tentative permit was received. On May 21st, the noise control permit board indicated that we would stand with our original decision and that it still applied. We then went back as staff and tried to correct the issue with our property records. What happens is because there were a lot of transactions changing ownership, the property records are transferred from the Register of Deeds to Tax Administrator's Office and then uploaded through GIS to be reflected on our GIS records for those parcels. And that process was not as updated as we needed it to be. We corrected that problem so that we are updating those records sooner rather than later. With that being said, we corrected that issue and then we gave a notice to the applicant of the final permit on June 8th of 2021. The final notice offers appellate 72 hours from the date of receiving that notice that they can let us know if they want to appeal. And we did in fact receive notice, again, from some residents to an attorney that they wanted to appeal. That appeal notice was received on June 11th. Our Norris Ordinance also requires us to, within 15 days of hearing of that appeal, to have a public hearing, which is why we are here this evening. And again, now that we are in the appeal process, those who are appealing were required to, again, mail notices to property owners within a thousand-foot radius of the location requesting the variance. And at that point, we had an updated property record listing for them to be able to use. They had to mail that notice to residents at least seven days before this public hearing, which was last Wednesday. And as of this afternoon, we did receive an affidavit from Attorney Coeness that those notices were received or mailed to residents within that radius as of last Wednesday, June 20, I'm sorry, June 16th. Our noise ordinance is enforced by the Sheriff's Office, and depending on the situation, it could be the state's Wildlife Commission. Complaints for the noise ordinance should come from at least two complainants, and they have to be at least 20 minutes apart from two separate locations. And so today, for the public hearing, you all as a board can take up to five days to make a decision. And the decisions that you can make related to this are you can either deny the temporary permit, you can approve the temporary permit, or you can approve it with some conditions. And with that said, that concludes my overview for you this evening.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jones, for that overview. Before I ask for any questions or concerns about the Board of Commissioners, I would like to hear from Mr. Barbara, which is the complainant at this time. Advocate, I'm sorry. I mean, complainant. Sorry.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak here this evening. I did leave a packet on the commissioner's desk, and I will reference those throughout my presentation here this evening. And I'll just reference page numbers, and there's numbers at the top right-hand corner of what I have given you this evening. Board of Commissioners, good evening, and good evening to the folks who have come out tonight for this very important hearing. My name is Chad Barber, and I'm the co-owner of the Pointing Lake Gassen, which is located on the south end of Eden Ferry Bridge. I would like to start, and I, Mr. Jones kind of already did this, but I do want to give a chronology of events so the commissioners know and the public at large understands what procedures there are in being granted a noise variance with the county. On March the 23rd, I reached out to Ms. Paula Pulli and officially requested through application a noise ordinance variance, as we have done every year since we opened 11 years ago. For 2021, I requested three Friday night dates, 16 Saturday night dates, and 10 Sunday daytime dates. So for the nighttime, when most people would be concerned, there were 19 dates total out of 365 days a year. The Sundays are daytime between 2:00 and 6:00 in the afternoon. This was the request I submitted. The meeting was set, and my request was heard at that meeting on April 28th. Mr. Jones, I believe it was, it was, asked me point blank, would there be a hardship for my business and to what extent, if the variance was not granted? And my answer to him was $350,000 difference in sales volume, and that's the difference in making money or losing it. This was the net effect of COVID on the restaurant and alcohol sales because we could not have entertainment for all of 2020. It was and is a must for us to survive. On May 3rd, my request was temporarily approved pending my mailing out certified, the notices to owners within 1,000 feet of the point, whose names and addresses were provided by the county, to me that the permit was temporarily approved and they could object if they took issue. I then had to prove to the county that I did indeed mail certify the notices as well as sign a notarized statement that I did in fact do such. On June 8th, 47 days since the application, I received my temporary grants permit, and then I had been approved, temporarily approved, as the Noise Control Board, quote, "did not find sufficient controversy to deny the permit", end quote. After the good news, I was made aware that there was an appeal to granting this variance, and this is what brings us here tonight, date 62 since application. Tonight, we cannot change the noise ordinance as it is today or the lengthy procedures for obtaining a variance. But tonight, we will shed some light on the noise ordinance and how lakeside business cannot operate with or without live entertainment at the decibel levels required by the ordinance, which brings me directly to Mr., is it Coeness? No, Mr. Coeness, the attorney, sorry. Mr. Coeness's appeal letter dated June 11th, 2021. I believe addressing his objections over several letters written to the county would be the most productive use of our time. Mr. Coeness represents the developer, Dwayne and Macon White, through several of their entities and South Point Homeowners Association. Mr. Coeness states in a letter he wrote on May 7th, 2021, to the county that, quote, "the music and related noise are very disturbing to the adjacent residential property owners", and that they are, quote, "bracing to deal with this persistent disturbance throughout the date's request." I would like, in light of that, to read two of the South Point homeowners' letters submitted that are in complete disagreement with that. These are residents of the townhome community, and those letters are in your packet right on top. The first one is from Chris Ensland. Dear Vincent and Paula, I know that you've acknowledged receipt of my mid-made memorandum outlining ultimately my support of the variance requested by the point. However, I wanted to take this additional opportunity to reinforce my support of the point's request for variance and have taken liberty to copy Mr. Barber directly from his awareness. While I cannot travel to attend the variance meeting due to working outside of North Carolina, please note that my wife Pam and I support the requested variance as co-owners on 123 Roadboat Way in South Point Townhomes adjacent to the point. Here are some additional points for your consideration. When we purchased our residence, we understood and expected live bands to be playing on many occasions, predominantly weekends and holidays. The point has been here for 10 years with bands playing throughout its history. We did our due diligence and understood that above, with no expectation of the point modifying their practices based on our decision to own adjacent property. Furthermore, we selected this property because of its proximity to the point so we could walk versus drive to the music venue. Up to this date, sound level has been managed well and has been fully tolerable, in our opinion. For reference, we have been in town on occasions of at least four to five live bands thus far in 2021. In closing, people can doubt the effectiveness of N95 face masks in preventing transmission of COVID, but they cannot doubt the well-documented effectiveness of 25-cent earplugs that knowingly reduce sound transmission 15 to 25 decibels. If individuals have high sensitivity to sound levels, they can easily find comfort wearing such a device. Ultimately, please consider what is reasonable for the needs and wants of many versus the few in determining the path forward. That said, and respectfully, none of this is offered to diminish the right others have to share and express counteropinions. That's from Mr. Ensland, and then from Mr. and Ms. Jason Swank. Chad, I got your name from Chris. We are immediate neighbors right here in the South Point Townhome Community. I just wanted to send a quick note offering our support for you guys. We bought our townhouse knowing well and good that you guys have live music during certain days and nights. Seems like there are a few in the community that disagree with your variance, but my wife Gretchen and I are not a part of that group. I was, I'm not able to make the meeting on Wednesday, but hoping this letter can help you guys out. There are more owners in South Point that agree just the same. And to be clear, there are currently only 12 homeowners over there. So we already have letters from two of the 12 that support what we have been doing for the last 11 years. We have other neighbors as well. We have Eden's Crossing, Eden Ferry Estates, yet no issues from their association or residents, at least that I'm aware of. As a licensed real estate agent in the state of North Carolina, and for those owners in South Point that have issues with the music, and there are a very few, trust me, what due diligence did you do before buying where you bought? In the North Carolina offered a purchase contract on page five under due diligence, it lists out what a buyer should do under that phase of the purchase. Under item number six entitled zoning and government regulation, it says you should inspect, quote, "adjacent land uses", unquote. Having entertainment for the last 11 years, had you done your due diligence, you would have known the history of the point and how we have always operated. Had you been opposed to such under due diligence in North Carolina, you could have walked away from your contract during that phase of the contract, but you opted not to do that. Mr. Coeness's second objection seems to be that the variance we requested this year is different than in years past, and he would be correct in that. And there is a very good reason. In the past, we have asked for bands to be able to play until 12:45 a.m. at the same decibel level as the daytime limit, which is 60 decibel. At nighttime, this goes to 55 decibels. So we were allowed to play for 10 years like that through that variance. Because we rarely ever had any complaints, we thought what we were doing, we were doing what we could to keep the music low because we are lake owners too. And we want to be good neighbors. Our eyes were open pretty wide in September of 2019 on Labor Day weekend when we were issued a ticket violating the decibel level, which, for the record, was thrown out of court. We had gone nine years with no issues. So when I began looking into this and investigating, I learned that 60 decibel is a normal conversation like we are having right now. If you look at page one of your packet, you will see, and this is from a sound engineer, and I have one here this evening, 60 dB is a conversational speech or like an electric shaver. That's what 60 decibel is. 65 decibels is piano practice. So I wanted to give you an example from the engineer as to what really 60 decibels really is. I hired a sound engineer to come and review the ordinance and take measurements in February 2020. And he did just that. If you look at page two and three of your packet, you will see that in February, February of 2020, nothing is going on on Lake Gassen in February, folks. No boats, not a lot of cars, none of that. He took measurements from three positions. And on page three is the map of where he took the measurements. Position number one, which was in the, behind the stage where the bands play, it measured 61.5 decibel in the middle of February in 2020, and we weren't even open. At position number two, by the boat, by the gas dock, 63.0 decibel. And in position number three, in the parking lot, 71.05 decibel on a day in February of I would like very quickly to call up Mark Camaro. He is a sound engineer from Raleigh, North Carolina. I've got a few more things to say after he does his little thing here. I've got a few more things to say after he does his little thing here, but I'd like to call him up to try to help understand from an expert what we're talking about.
Thank you for having me. My name is Mark Camaro, and I'm an audio engineer. I own and operate Sonic Wave Recording Studios in Raleigh, been awarded two gold records. I also work for an audio visual systems integration firm as a design engineer, sales engineer, and I'm working on the county commissioners for Brunswick right now, upgrading their audio system. So really what I wanted to briefly explain to you guys is, I have taken some measurements, and Piedmont did a fine job with their survey. So just we get a feel for how loud is loud. We use decibels to measure how loud something is. We can measure phase, we can measure reverb, and so decibels is what we're talking about tonight. But the base level in this room that I came up with was 54. That's what my meter read, 54. That's no one talking. Now, we have one person talking on a mic, Mrs. Duncan. She has 66.9. The third speaker or the fourth speaker, I couldn't hear their name, I'm having a hard time hearing over there where I'm at, and that's where I'm taking my readings, was at 69.9, and Chad, I could hear him clear as a bell, he was at 75 decibels. So in my opinion, the ordinance of 60 decibels is simply outdated. It was, it was designed back in the 60s when we all had three acres of land and a transistor radio. Charlotte, North Carolina, theirs is 85. That's residential, 85. New York City, it's 95. So you're gonna see statewide, countywide, as this state starts to condense, we build more work, play, live type of environments, which is very similar to what we have at Lake Gaston. You're gonna see those ordinances, the baseline ordinance change. And so there's only one other thing I wanted to say, and you may read in this paperwork where it says A-weighted. There are three ways to calculate decibels, A, B, and C. What that is, is it takes all of the sound together, whether it's a dentist drill at 70 decibels, or whether it's a motorcycle at 70 decibels, or, or a truck driving by, and it calculates the average. And the A-weight is the industry standard. B-weight and C-weight are a little different, but everyone uses A-weight. So that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
In a letter dated September 19, 2019, Mr. Coines provides in Exhibit B, 29 readings, this is in page four of your packet, 29 readings that a homeowner or someone took down by the boat launch at South Point throughout the summer of 2019. If you look at Exhibit B, which is page four of your packet, if you look at the average decibel, and they, they did this from June through September of 2019, took 29 readings, and the average decibel level reading that they took was 60.99. So what they were hearing was a normal conversation like we're having right now, and that's somehow Remember, February 2020, with nobody around, the ambient noise was over 60 dB, exactly what this person's readings were over the summer of 2019 at the boat launch. What would the reading be, you think, if they were up at their house or if they were inside of their house? Much, much lower. On June 12th of this year, which was a Saturday night, I took measurements myself, myself, without music being played. I had pictures and timestamp 74 dB at the water at 7:45 p.m. that night. This is ambient noise with no music, and that's on page five of your packet. With the music, we are in the mid 80s. The point here is simple, cannot operate our regular business with no music at 60 dB. How are we supposed to do it with a band? Hence the change in variance required. I could have done what we always do and get the variance we've always had, but that would serve no purpose and would add up to more tickets and more court costs. What we asked for and was granted was a variance on the decibel level because that is what is required for us to function. If you want to limit that decibel level to 85 to 90 dB, I would be fine with that. But we cannot possibly provide entertainment at any lower level than that. Another of Mr. Kianus's statements in his letter is that quote, "Further expansion and buildout of these townhomes may be jeopardized. Yet the 36 units planned for South Point, only 10 remain unsold, based on the Evergreen Homes website. Seventy-four percent of the planned units have been sold." That's on page six of your packet. So it doesn't seem to me that the sales have slowed down very much over there whatsoever. And lastly, Mr. Kianus objects to the notion that we have only lowered our number of dates from 35 in 2019 to 29 in 2021. So I guess in his mind, we haven't lowered them enough. Actually, actually, Mr. Kianus, in 2019, we had 44 dates with live entertainment that we booked and played. Because, because of the lateness of the hearing in 2019, some past dates we had played were not on the request, and no Sunday dates were listed because we assumed who would complain about a beach band from 2:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon every other Sunday. So their dates were not listed. So what is reality? We have eliminated all Friday night DJs. The only Friday night entertainment we have is on the three big weekends of the summer. We also brought backwards the stop time from 12:45 a.m. to 12:15 a.m. So we've gone from 44 dates in 2019 to 29 dates in 2021, a full 35% reduction in dates and a 30-minute reduction on stoppage of the music. Where did we start back in the early days? We had live Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and every other Sunday, and on Fridays and Saturdays, we played until 12:45 a.m. We have, we had live entertainment 55 to 65 days a year. We have scaled that back to be good neighbors and to offer less, but much, but much, much more professional entertainment offerings in terms of the bands that we allow to play. I book all the bands and talk to them before booking them and before the show, reminding them of the noise level, and I always say, play as low as you can while still sounding good. All bands get the same spiel from me every single time they get booked and on the same day they're gonna play. I would like to finish up with some additional factual data about how we as a restaurant contribute to Warren County. The point currently employs 75 people, so we're half the size of Glen Raven as it sits Well over half of whom are Warren County residents. 2% of the sales tax that we pay goes to the county, which amounts to about $41,000 a year to your revenue. We buy right at $70,000 worth of liquor from the Warren County ABC store yearly, some of which comes back to the county. In 2020, we accounted for 41% of all purchases from Warren County ABC between all the liquor licensees in the county. We were 41% of their volume. In 2019, in 2019, we served 112,364 guests, and in 2020, we served 85,359 guests. No doubt, this decline in 2020 was due to COVID, but absolutely also because we had no entertainment for people to come out and enjoy. But think about that for a minute. In two years, we served over 200,000 guests at the restaurant in this county. Also in 2020, through payroll and tip-outs, we put $880,000 on the street, which, as you can imagine, gets mostly spent locally. And as a side note, but also very importantly, we employ two off-duty Warren County deputies for our evening dates, who are always very professional and great to work with, and we welcome their presence. We've been in this 11 years and been receiving variances from the county for all of them except last year because of COVID, where we didn't request anything. We have done a ton of homework and hired professionals to better understand decibel levels and what can be done and what can't be based on the ordinance. Again, hence the reason for requesting the decibel level variance. I've known Duane and Macon White for 25 years. Not once had they called or texted me and asked to sit down and try and work this out. They have had lawyers do it for them. I'm a reasonable guy as you ever will meet, but when neighbors can't talk or reach out and have a conversation, then where, where are we in this world? I will say this, though, they're good at marketing. Page seven of your packet. On page one of the South Point Town Homes brochure, which is online, and I am sure handed out on site over there, literally on the first page, it says quote, "Walking distance to one of Lake Gaston's most popular restaurants, The Point." Well, we know two of the 12 owners of South Point bought just because of that in letters that I've already read earlier. So the marketing of the point to sell the townhomes is working. How rich is it, though, to use my restaurant as a marketing tool to sell your townhomes and then try to regulate how I run it? In closing, I just want to say thank you to the hundreds of patrons who have emailed you letters in support of us and to the ones who have shown up here tonight, I thank you. I humbly ask that this board uphold the recommendation of the Noise Ordinance Board in allowing the variance to remain for the dates requested, and I urge you to do so this evening so that business as usual can continue. The rest of our summer dates are booked up, and we have been somewhat in limbo going now over two months. I hope you will not make us wait any longer. Time is of the essence. Thank you for your time and attention, and I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. I would ask at this time that we would reserve the question portion of this, and I'm gonna allow, I guess attorney, is it Coines? To come up, please, and speak.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter. Before I begin, I would like to make sure each of the board members have received an actual full copy of the appeal that was filed. I'm not sure if that was included in your agenda packet. I didn't see it on the agenda, but I do have copies here and be happy to hand those out for you guys to consider. Any?
We received them. Go ahead, please.
The full appeal, okay.
Yeah.
Again, my name is Jerry Coines, and I represent various entities that will be negatively affected by the granting of the requested noise permit, and thus our request is that the temporary variance not be approved. If, however, the permit were to be approved, we request that the board further consider limiting the number of dates for which events can be provided, imposing earlier end time for Friday and Saturday nights, which are currently approved through 12:15 a.m. As Mr. Barber indicated previously, it was 12:45 in 2019. And lastly, also request that, to impose a reasonable sound level restriction on the noise occurring on the property. As the permit is currently written, there is no limit to the sound level for the dates that have been approved, absolutely none. The permits that were issued in 2019, as Mr. Barber indicated, and I'll speak to more, those did include a sound limitation of the 60 dB. In making your decision on whether to grant or deny the permit, it is important to review the standards set out in your ordinance. In considering whether to grant a permit, Section 12B of the ordinance requires the board to consider the adverse impact on the health, safety, welfare, and comfort of persons affected, the adverse impact on property affected, and other adverse impacts on granting the permit. Furthermore, Section 2 of the ordinance recognizes that loud sounds crossing outdoor private property boundaries can endanger the physical and emotional health and welfare of the people, interfere with legitimate communication in business and recreation, interfere with sleep, increase construction costs, depress property values, offend the senses, create public nuisances, and in many respects, reduce the quality of life. Finally, Section 12C of the ordinance states that if the board finds that a sufficient controversy exists regarding the application, the ordinance is clear, the board shall deny the permit. In this case, we feel that it is readily apparent that a considerable controversy exists regarding the application, and once such a controversy exists, your ordinance mandates that the board deny the permit. Even though the permit has been, even though the point has been operating and having these events for several years, the character and landscape surrounding the point has and continues to change with the ongoing development of the South Point Town Homes. The music and related noise are very disturbing to nearby property owners, and as these townhomes develop and will continue to develop, there exists an immediate and continuing need to consider these lot owners as well as future lot owners in addressing these issues. One point that the applicant, and again, Mr. Barber made tonight before the permit board, and again tonight, was that, was this point of buyer beware, and that essentially the owners and developers should have considered the noise from the point before purchasing or developing at that location. That point is fair, however, one, any investigation would have shown that the permits that have been previously issued for prior years did allow a permit, but it all, it only allowed a variance up to 60 decibels. Assuming compliance with those permits, you have essentially a point that's operating, assuming that they would comply with those permits, that they're not exceeding that 60 decibel. Also, there exists a Warren County noise ordinance, which property owners are required to comply with, and there are safeguards built into the noise ordinance that allow for persons affected by such permits to contest and oppose the granting of these permits for temporary variance. That's exactly where we're exercising our rights today, and we appreciate that safeguard in the ordinance, and that's why we're here today to essentially state our case as to why, you know, these further considerations need to be fully vetted by initially the permit board and then you all as the board commissioners. My clients look to the permit board, and now they look to you as their elected officials to consider as required by Section 12B of the ordinance, again, the adverse impact on the health, safety, welfare, and comfort of the persons affected, the adverse impact on property affected, and other adverse impacts on granting the property, or excuse me, on granting the permit. Another point I want to revisit is the notion that the permit board has been granting these permits for years. While we acknowledge that the permits have been granted in years past, in fact, what has been issued, as Mr. Barber did indicate over the years, and what was again issued in 2019, was a temporary variance allowing music no later than 12:45 at a maximum decibel level of 60. Because the point is zone neighborhood lakeside business, the maximum noise ordinance is 60 decibels for the day and 55 at night. So essentially what they did is they just extended the daytime hours of 60 into the night. However, my understanding is this is the first year that a permit has been issued without, to the point, without including any qualifying sound limits whatsoever. One of the items that the noise control permit board also found in making their tentative approval was that there were only four official reports of complaints that met the official criteria. I think that's one, somewhat misleading, and it may be that the official complaint is not by definition, but my client said 2019- but my clients fed 2019, numerous of them, large amount of calls to the Sheriff's Department. My clients vehemently disputed the validity of the decided number of complaints as far as only really four issues or official complaints taking place in that year. During the 2019 summer, my clients and other residents of the townhome development and perhaps others were forced to deal with the persistent noise disturbance, and there were countless other number of calls made to the Warren County Sheriff's Department. My clients were repeatedly told that calling the Sheriff's Department was their remedy. So that they did. They called the Sheriff's Department and called them frequently. And to that end, we also felt bad because we wanted this issue to be resolved, and we didn't want it to be taxing on the 911 system and precious resources and just to be occupied on noise services. But these were serious issues, and that was the remedy that was provided to us, and that's what we sought to address. These efforts that took place in 2019 from my clients are generally referenced in several of the various letters that I sent out. I would like to briefly point out a few examples that speak to that issue. For example, my letter dated July 12th that was addressed to the Warren County Manager, Sheriff, and County Attorney stated in part that our clients have been forced to make numerous calls to the Sheriff's Department, but the issue continues to persist, and my clients rarely, if ever, receive a follow-up from their call. Even after a call to the Sheriff's Department, my clients feel the noise level does not lessen or begin to fall within a noise level permitted under the ordinance. I have encouraged my clients to contact the Sheriff's Department whenever they have such an issue, but these efforts and calls have not changed or improved the ongoing violations. That was a letter from early on, and that essentially continued throughout the summer. An additional example can be found in my letter dated September 19th, 2019, that was addressed to the Warren County Manager and Warren County Attorney, which stated in part that our clients have been burdened all summer by the unlawful noise emanating from The Point. We have been in contact with the Warren County Sheriff's Department throughout the summer in an effort to address the noise and to bring The Point into compliance with the ordinance. However, despite these efforts, the ordinance violations continue with no end in sight. That same letter further stated that despite the warnings and charge from the night before, the violations continued, and on the following day, another warning and charge of violation of the ordinance was issued. Even when a warning was given and a charge issued, The Point continued to play music at levels exceeding what is permitted under the ordinance. The Warren County Sheriff's Department informed me that it could only issue one charge per night. So after a charge was issued, there seemed to be no further recourse available that day, and seemingly no long-term resolution to this matter without court involvement. Essentially, what would happen on the, essentially after a summer's worth of effort, there was finally a couple of citations that I believe were eventually issued. And again, it was, you get one for the night, and then, you know, that's it for the day. They get their date in court, as Mr. Barber already indicated. That was then tossed out. So you can get a sense of my clients' frustration when they've been at this all summer, and they really just feel helpless as far as any sort of reasonable means of enforcement to address these issues. And one thing you will note that the applicant did not disclose was the noise level leaving the property when music was playing. It's certainly helpful to acknowledge, okay, perhaps maybe the Warren County noise ordinance may be a little dated. I believe the adoption was in the early 2000s, so it's certainly not decades old as the consultant testified to. But the ordinance, as far as being 55 and 60, and the ambient bass level noises that he stated, stated as far as this is what we're trying to operate, we acknowledge that there's some difficulty there. And we're not trying to shut their business down. We're not trying to make sure they can't operate or have any entertainment at all. But what we're looking for is some reasonable means where the parties can coexist. And that's essentially what we're looking for. The applicant did indicate a willingness to impose a reasonable restriction level of 85 to 90. That, I think, is a step in the right direction, and I'll get to that further. But in closing, you may be surprised to hear, my clients actually like having The Point nearby as it is a nice nearby amenity for the property owners. As Mr. Barber indicated in the marketing, perhaps in the marketing materials, it is a great amenity for a townhome development, to have a restaurant that has entertainment. But again, that's not to say we're trying to shut them down. We don't want that. We want both parties to be able to succeed and do well. It's beneficial for the county for the townhome development to build out and develop fully. You get nice homes, boat slips, great tax revenue from that development, as well as getting the revenue and business and just general something to do for members of the community as well as people visiting. So it's a win-win, and we're looking for all parties to be able to coexist here. But as is currently written, it's tough. And doing a noise variance that puts no level restriction on it is really tough. It puts my clients in a really tough spot. And if anything, they're probably going to be, they're in a worse spot now with this permit variance than what was in 2019. At least in 2019, that 60 decibel threshold, they could argue against that and say, well, what was granted was 60 decibels. And granted, yes, that may be difficult, but we really need to find something that has some teeth in it where not what the permit board granted that essentially is just a, hey, all those days, those handful of Fridays, those every Saturday for your entire summer, and I believe it's every other Sunday. It can't just be a free-for-all, because at this point, with that variance, they'll really have no recourse at all to be able to call. Any call to the Sheriff's Department for a noise complaint would just say, well, you just got to wait till their time's up, and, you know, if they're still playing at 12:15, maybe get back with me then. And that's not, you wouldn't want that in your backyard. I know it's great for the community, and a lot of community members here like it. And that's not, we're not trying to, again, we're not trying to get rid of it. But it's got to be something that's a little more give and take than what has, as it's currently drafted. However, again, the noise is still a problem. We are seeking to find a way for the parties to better coexist. While my clients appreciate the fact that a couple less dates were requested by the applicant, and that requested time for Friday nights changed from 12:45 to 12:15, those are certainly steps in the right direction. But again, my clients do not feel that that's enough. And while we acknowledge that there are many people that enjoy frequenting the business and feel that it's great for the community at large, I think it is safe to assume that those same people would not want that type of noise occurring next door, particularly with the duration and frequency that the applicant has requested. We reiterate our request that the requested variance be denied. If, however, it wasn't an outright denial, we, again, are going to request that reasonable conditions be stated on the permit. And again, I think it's important for the board to remember your standard that's in your ordinance is, and this is always before the permit board, and again, is what for you here on appeal, if there is a sufficient controversy, what the ordinance says, the board shall deny the permit. And I think from what's here and all the correspondence that you've seen from other 2019 and what you expect to see in years ahead, it's going to continue to be an issue until the parties can find something that they can live with together. And I don't think a variance that has no sound level restrictions at all is the answer. So again, in the event a permit were issued, again, we request that reasonable conditions or limits be stated on the permit, which can include but not be limited to decreasing the number of dates for which a temporary variance is issued, limiting the number of time, limiting the time period for Friday and Saturday nights to 10:30, and certainly no later than 11 p.m. As Mr. Barber indicated, on the Sunday, wholly agreed, the Sunday afternoon, obviously less of an issue. And then again, last thing, really need to impose a maximum level restriction for these requested dates. Mr. Barber did indicate a willingness to comply with the threshold level of 85 to 90 dBs. I think that's a step in the right direction. Again, our request would be something maybe closer to a 70 to be imposed, but certainly some restriction that's not just a blanket variance, and that would leave my clients with absolutely no recourse at all during those dates. Again, think of this. My clients are looking to you as your elected officials to protect their interests, enforce your ordinance, and to the extent you're allowing an exemption under your ordinance to make it reasonable, just as if something was coming in your backyard or next to you, how you would want that to be done. Be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you, guys, again, for your time. And again, be happy to come back up with any questions, should the board have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Kounis. All right, ladies and gentlemen of the board, at this time, were any, any questions from Mr. Barber or Mr. Kounis, please? All right. Let's see, Commissioner Pierce.
I do. Do we have to ask some question, or can we now ask questions to our attorney? Because I do have a question, more so. And I know that we've been given the guidelines, whether we approve, just as blanket.
Ms. Commissioner Pierce, I want to answer your question. The layout that I'm thinking about right now is to hear both sides from the perspective of representation. Then we'll go into hearing from the public, and then we'll ask, we'll come back to ourselves after we've actually heard more of the totality of the conversation, if you don't mind.
That'll be fine, but you may have those that'll come up and wonder the same thing that I'm wondering, and we can just kind of allow the attorney to answer it now, and that saves some time.
I do agree, but we're in the public comment section of this hearing.
So no, I don't have any questions necessarily for either of those. Well, I can't say that. So for Mr. Barber, question for you, like Mr. Kounis was mentioning, his clients aren't in total disagreement, you know, with... Yeah, all right. So is this, is this better for everybody? All right. So I was, I was asking the question of Mr. Barber because Mr. Kounis said that his clients don't have a problem with The Point having the live entertainment or whatever. Are you okay? Would you be of the opinion of saying, I don't have an issue with setting the decibel level?
I have no problem setting the decibel level, but it cannot be lower than 85. It's not reasonable. As I indicated in my remarks two Saturdays ago with no music, none, the decibel reading was 74 at the water, and it averaged 81. It fluctuated up and down. I can't do it at 70. If, if, if it's not at least 85, there's not any way we could possibly operate with less than that. So to be honest, I mean, we have done, we've gone from 55 to 65 dates, planned till 12:45, down to 19 evening dates, stopping at 12:15. And I'll be honest, I'm not very negotiable with anything else other than that. I mean, I'm not going to continue to cut dates and cut times down to 10 o'clock and 11 o'clock. It just doesn't work for our crowd. We need to be able to operate like we have been. I'm fine with a reasonable decibel variance being put in, but it would have to be at a minimum of 85.
Okay. And last question for me. Did your sound engineers ever go down to the boat docks where, like, South Point is to take the levels by chance when you had concerns?
Yes. So they didn't take it over at South Point because the way the ordinance reads is that the measurement is taken from the furthest piece of your property that you own. So they didn't go over there. They did that themselves. They went down to the waterfront. When we got our citation in 2019, the only one we've ever gotten in 11 years, it was, the decibel level that was read that day was 82. So that's why I'm kind of using that as a barometer to say, I think 85 is, I mean, in talking to the sound and talking to Mark, 85 is what Charlotte does, it's what Cary does, a lot of your outside venues. 85 is what's being used at the property line as to what's reasonable, and that's what most, most places are doing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Are there any more questions from the Board of Commissioners? All right. Ms. Ellen, would you, I think we had some emails to come in. Can you give us the count that of positions for or against the variance, please?
Yes, as of today, it's 13.
Can you be a little bit more detailed? For or against?
Against. 13.
All right.
Against the noise ordinance.
And for?
For, it would be 145.
Okay. 145, 40 variance, and 13 against?
Yes.
All right. How many sign-ups did we have?
11.
11. Ladies and gentlemen, it is our policy here with the Board of Commissioners, if your opinion or your statement is basically in accordance with another party that you're aware of that's here, that we ask that you yield your time to that person under the same position, I would not keep anyone from speaking, but in the essence of time, I will, of course, break that time down. So with that said, we're going to start off with our first public comment in three minutes. Please call it first.
Allison Monday. I thank you for your time, and I just have a couple quick comments. Most of it's already been said. I'm in 100% support of The Point getting their variance. I would like to have a show of hands by you as our commissioners. How many of you have been to The Point Restaurant?
We're not going to do that.
Well, because I want to know if you know what the situation is there, and do you understand how that that section right there is the busiest commercial environment on Lake Gaston? So somebody had to approve a variance for those condominiums to be able to be provided a residential variance to go into that commercial environment. It is the busiest commercial environment on Lake Gaston. So somebody either in the variance community of whatever they call it board, or this commission, the commissioners provided a variance to allow construction of residential into the busiest commercial environment on Lake Gaston. So that's where this big old quandary of yuck started. I live right behind those townhouses in Eaton's Crossing. So I hear the thump, thump, thump from the music. Doesn't bother me a bit. And I'll sit out on my porch and listen to the music, and I get a free concert. If you ask for them to have a 60 decibel, which is your ordinance, as a noise level, I couldn't even hear you, ma'am, when you started talking, which is a normal conversation, is what we were told. I couldn't hear you. So they want the neighbors, the few neighbors that are not supported by their own HOA organization, because I know who runs their HOA, and I spoke to them on my way to this hearing today. And they are not supported by their own HOA organization for their variance request against the noise and all of that. So they don't have that. They have an attorney that a few of them, and are those that are complaining, taxpayers in Warren County? Yes, because they own property. But are they registered voters? Do they live here full-time? I live here full-time, and I am a taxpayer, and I vote. I sent a message out on Facebook about this scenario. I got over 300 responses. A lot of them are voters. And a lot of them are not the ones that put a lot of you all into office. It's a different party. Keep that in mind. We're keeping a prize. We like The Point. We like the entertainment. We support Chad. We support the employees there, and we would like, I'm saying what I've heard and talked to a lot of it, we want a permanent variance for them. So he doesn't have to come here every year and go through this craziness every single year. My time's up. I said what I needed. It needs to be permanent. The 60 decibels is ridiculous. Thank you and have a good night.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Ella, next, please.
Christopher George.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Why he's giving up? I do understand that this is a passionate type of situation, and, and I understand. But it, but, no, I'm speaking, if we could just be a little bit more, you know, proper in how we respond to each person that gets up to speak, because I don't want to start and think that somebody feel uncomfortable. So if we would just probably like hold out our pluses a little bit, I appreciate it. Yes, sir, go ahead, please, three minutes.
Now, look, I'm on TV. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you, thank you for the jobs you do, the work you do, the effort is, is yeoman's, yeoman's work. Again, my name is Christopher George. Real quick, a little background on, I'm a 30-year retired combat vet, traveled the world more than a few times. I'm also a retired safety agency electrical engineer from a couple of big industrials, of which I did a lot of UL testing, excuse me, and of that testing, it involved noise, noise testing. Now, I'll say this, a lot of this, one of the gentlemen did not speak to, is noise testing is a very, very difficult science. It is nothing like the speedometer in your car, shall we say. Automobile is in direct contact with the road, and you're going down the road, and those speedometers are calibrated to the gears in the transmission, and it's, it's a much simpler science. And when that gauge is reading 60, we all have come to societally in agreement that you're, you're, you're doing 60 miles an hour. And when you're doing 95, and the officer pulls you over, there's, there's not a big argument, there is, and there's not a big argument about what you're, what you're doing or not doing, but sound pressure level, as we measure in decibels, dB, is a very complicated science. And this act, what I'm, what I'm asking you as the council to consider is simply this, because I don't want to take up any more persons a lot of time, is that the devices that are being used need to be calibrated. They need to be calibrated to the National Institutes of Standards and Technology standards, which a lot of ones you buy off of Amazon or the ship, and then the resident goes down to the shore and turns it on. Are they using it correctly? Is it set for the A-weighting average? Are they holding it in a wrong position? There's, there's a lot of things to consider, and the readings can be widely varied based on some of those factors. Even the most sensitive, calibrated, sophisticated sound measuring devices with someone who does not know how to properly use it gives highly erroneous readings. So I would suggest that if this council wants to mitigate this issue, that the decision is to approve variance for now, for this year, and then either open up a investigation or what have you, where there is an agreed upon, this issue is not going away. You're going to continue to have residents move into the area that think of the lake as a serene, peaceful environment, and they're getting away from the big city or what have you.
Sir.
And they're going to come up and complain, so...
I'll give you additional 30 seconds to finish up your comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, thank you. And, and during that investigative process, you can really put to bed, and if it comes up with a number like 85, then great. I'm an engineer. I'm saying 85 is a number that's probably still too low.
Thank you for your comment, sir.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Ms. Ella?
John McLean.
Sir, will you please specify who, please? Is there anybody in particular? Thank you, sir.
Joe Mann.
No, Mr. Mann, you have, Mr. Mann, you have five minutes.
Twice three was six. Is that a new math that you're doing? Mine is very straightforward. I was one of 13 on a noise committee to rewrite the illegal noise ordinance that we're operating under now. This whole debate is a moot point. The ordinance has been illegal from the first day to today. An example is the sound readings cannot be taken while the business is in operation. Think about that. You can only take sound readings when they're closed. The commissioners have consistently fought bringing the noise ordinance into compliance. They have paid over five attorneys multiple thousands of dollars to maintain this illegal ordinance. The question is, who was profiting from the obstruction? Now, I can tell you, as a Rolling Stones aficionado and from experience, that the dB level in the first row of a Rolling Stones concert is 135 dB. I would ask the commissioners to stop their obstruction and to allow the noise ordinance committee to continue and to complete their work on rewriting. They, they pushed us off with 18 different noise ordinances that we were supposed to read, and then we went out and found a 281-page PhD dissertation on noise ordinances from Ohio. We were within two meetings of completing the new noise ordinance, and we were disbanded, told that we were no longer needed, officials would take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Ms. Ella?
Gerald Conas.
All right.
Dwayne White.
Mr. White? Three minutes, thank you.
Wow. I don't know how to start other than, Commissioner Davis, Chairman Davis, I appreciate your time, fellow commissioners, county managers, and everybody here in support of this issue. I'm going to try to simplify it. I'm going to do a lot of graphs. I'm not going to do a lot of stuff, but I'm familiar with Lake Gaston. I came there 30 years ago, and I started developing the very piece of land, my father built the very building that this operation is happening in. When I came 30 years ago, young, from Washington DC, engineers, attorneys, and started this, I can remember a dear, dear friend of mine at the time was on the board, T.T. Clayton. And we were going through ordinances when we were building, and he said, "Son, we might not have the most complicated ordinance in the world, and we might not address everything, but we're a good county, and we believe in what we have, and we support what we believe in." And it was a simple philosophy. That's 30 years ago. I've been in front of this board many times. Zoning, planning, this board, not necessarily per se, but the function of the board, supported us in developing South Point Marina. And Chad, you're right, we pitched the issue of the Marina community. That was the design. But when I looked at the buildings and I looked, I looked at what I could do and what I couldn't, and I had the simple philosophy that my neighbors would live by the same ordinance we all had to live in. So if that ordinance needs to be changed, it needs to be changed. If it's outdated, it may be outdated, but the last time I checked, it was our ordinance. And just to throw out some numbers, Mr. Barber mentioned $374,000, 380, whatever. Just to give you an idea, we've got 36 townhouses and an average of 400,000 pieces, 14,400,000 dollars worth of tax revenue created by, to this county. Not to mention the Marina that we operate and the other customers. So people want to talk about big numbers? I'll give you some big numbers. He also talks about 16 days. If you look at the calendar, most people, and like I say, I've been, I might not be as smart as anybody about it, but most people come. We've got people in the Marina that their summer starts Memorial Day, and they go home at Labor Day. You know, their summer. Mr. Barber said 16 Saturdays. Well, there happens to be 16 weeks from Memorial Day to Labor Day. So 16 weeks is, is the important number here, not 365 days. It's 16 weeks of voting, the crux of the season, a lot of people's summer, kids get out of school, 16 weeks. They want an exception. They don't change the ordinance, but he admitted that he's been running for 11 years with the variance. He admitted that he cannot run his business under the normal zoning rules that this county has in place. So the solution is every single spring, he comes for a variance. When we develop the town, we can't contemplate that. We contemplate at the ordinance.
Your time has expired. I will give you additional 30 seconds to finish up your comments, please. Who was I? All right. You have five minutes, two-minute section.
I won't take near that, but...
All right.
Just in summary, I mean, y'all have a, we've been in front of the board a lot of time, commend your effort, you got a tough spot, but I mean, a compromise is to take the level from 60? Mr. Barber says, "Well, I wouldn't decide for anything less than 85." That's almost a 50% entry. And he doesn't want some of the Saturdays, he wants every single one of them. I had a customer today, said, "We're in support of the point. We get in our boat, and we ride," it's a boat customer, and he said, "We ride all the way from Bracy, listen to the music." Got a simple question. I said, "At 10 o'clock at night, if you don't feel well, can you go home and go to sleep?" He said, "Yeah, we just ride home and go to sleep." The people that bought in our community can't ride home and go to sleep, because 16 out of 16 Saturdays. And now he's got an ordinance that doesn't limit the speed limit. It doesn't say the speed limit is 35, you can go to 55. It says, "You can just do what you want." That's what the temporary, I mean, my understanding of the ordinance is clear. It says, "If there is sufficient controversy, it shall be denied." Now, I don't want Mr. Barber to go out of business. It's a Marina community, but 16 out of 16, and 85 versus 60, is not exactly being a good neighbor. And just to clarify the record, we did reach out early, not to you, Chad, I'll give you that, but to another gentleman in this room, quote unquote, "Anybody buys in that community that are crazy, they should have known we were here first." That's like having a speed limit on a country road and having the analogy of two young kids going, they have cars, and they're running 60. Nobody says anything, nobody moves in. Now that family goes in with kids, and they go to call the sheriff for a speed limit, and they say, "Oh, we were here first." When does it come down to the rules? You know, if there needs to be changes, there needs to be changes. You know? I mean, that's, it's that simple. Everybody get to, you talk about voting and everything, somebody mention voting? All the Facebook site? It'd be interesting to see that how many people are really in the 1,000 feet, and the ordinance says 1,000 feet.
Mr. White, I will give you the remaining 30 seconds, please.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you. Ms. Ella?
Kim Coley.
Ms. Coley?
I want to apologize because my decimal point is going to be off the chart. That's just who I am. I'm Kim Coley, and I am from Wake County. Mr. Davis, thank you for having me here today, board. I ran for county commissioner in Wake County. I know the hot seats you're sitting in, and what a privilege it is to be a part of Warren County. I have been a member of this community for 11 years. I own residential property here on the lake that is equivalent of nearly $2 million, and that's just in Warren County. So much so that, that I liked this community, that we bought acreage and plan to build, bringing private businesses in the area. I love this community. And yes, I did find it a safe haven away from Wake County and the craziness of the city, but I didn't want to get away from the environment of community and community livelihood and the enjoyment of the area. Matter of fact, I enjoy bringing guests to the area and showing them the hot spots, including the Point. And many times, we have taken boat rides of our ministers or businesses to the Point to enjoy the festivities that they have to offer, and we tip our waiters and waitresses and bartenders well, because we want to invest in this community. We've taken the time to get to know the people of this area, whether it's the grocery clerk or whether it's the restaurant owners or business owners, because we want to be a part of it. I'm a preacher's kid, and this is a fine thing that you all have to be very careful when you start talking about decimal points, because, see, we can put it on the point, but when the church wants to have an outdoor event and a preaching engagement, or they want to have a jamboree or a concert for the youth, and all of a sudden, neighbors don't like it, we have to think ahead. And so I ask you all, as I plan to invest in this community, the wisdom of Solomon is in your hand. You have to choose wisely, just like the buoys that we face in North Carolina. We're not allowed to put a buoy 25 feet in front of our docks to protect our children or our property, but our neighbors do, Virginia does, and so when you're going up a creek that has North Carolina on one side and Virginia on the other, well, they will stay away from the Virginia side, and they'll hug the North Carolina properties. It's going to happen the same thing with these businesses. If we don't govern carefully, what's going to happen is the businesses and restaurants on the water or on navigating ability will gain the benefit of having outdoor concerts. And Warren County, we will lose the financial revenue and opportunity that is in your hand to govern. Thank you again. I wouldn't want to be in your shoes, but I'm glad somebody's doing it.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Ella?
Debra Ferrucio.
Ms. Ferrucio?
Good evening. I'm holding up here the culprit. This is the noise, high-impact land use and polluting industries ordinance. This ordinance has a lot of problems. This is not anything new that you guys realize, I'm sure, but Mr. Mann mentioned that in this ordinance, certain businesses are exempted from any kind of regulation. So my understanding of this noise ordinance has come from high-impact land use. It has not come from the kind of noise that is made nuisance noise at, say, a party at the Point. So I am not weighing in tonight on whether or not this variance should be granted, but I am here to tell you that the noise ordinance does need change. I have looked at, along with about 15 members of the Noise Ordinance Task Force, we spent months studying noise ordinances everywhere, and we realized how contentious it was, because we were friends, and we were arguing among ourselves about what is noise and what is sound? What do you find annoying and what do I find fine to listen to? And we realized it... And we realized it was very difficult to make decisions about sound, but we also realized that we have to protect not just citizens in the county, but businesses such as yours, sir, at the point. We did work on a draft and we got to a point where we thought we had something good and the county said, let's hold on. And so we now are at this point where we have to look at what's wrong with the noise ordinance. When we looked at decibel readings, which you're not even allowed to take when it comes to high-impact land use, that means a racetrack or a chipmunk or something loud, you're not even allowed to use decibel readings, but we found how difficult it is to figure out what decibel reading is the right thing for what situation. Sixty decibels is really low. We were surprised when we read it in the noise ordinance. Eighty-five is when you begin to harm hearing when it's over a certain amount of time. So my recommendation tonight, I don't have answers, this is a very contentious and complicated issue, but my recommendation might be to allow the variance this year. And then to do what the gentleman brought up here, let's look at what decibel readings really affect what and how, because eighty-five is at the beginning of where you're beginning to harm hearing. I'm not going to go, if I go to the point and listen to music, which I would like to, I might wear earplugs and still enjoy the music, because I know that your hearing begins to get harmed at eighty-five. And I know that I don't want to end up deaf like my father, because his life was really diminished when he could no longer hear. So hearing is an important issue and the purpose of the noise ordinance is to protect our health. It says in the purpose of the ordinance, it's to protect our health, our property values and our quality of life.
I give you additional thirty seconds, please.
So I just want to say tonight that I understand commissioners, that you guys are in a very difficult position, but to make decisions like this does require input. And so maybe you could, if you gave the variance this time, you could create a committee of people that represent the point's interests and the people that represent the other side and get them to sit down like we did on this noise ordinance task force and start discussing what could possibly be acceptable. And then they won't be mad at you.
Ms. Ferrucio, thank you for your comments. Ms. Allen? I didn't hear. All right, next, please.
Neil Anderson.
Thank you for holding this meeting, Chad. We love going to the point. I had to sell a family house in upstate New York because it was too far. Live in Raleigh, moved up here in two thousand and eighteen and, and we're going to be developing some property up here. I live in Eaton's Ferry Estates, y'all know where that is. I hear it and what I hear is summer. What I hear is fun. What I don't hear is Cary, North Carolina or Raleigh. There's two types of people. One looks for a way, the other looks for an excuse. And there's a lot of people that just look for excuses and they don't give people a break. They're the people that, that hear the music and instead of going, oh, they're rocking. It's how can I look at an ordinance? How can I do this? And, you know, we don't run to Raleigh to get lawyers, we get them here, right? Does that make sense? In law school, I learned about a couple things. One of them is called coming to the nuisance and I suggest you all read up on that. That's real important. The other one is an ordinance can be struck down for, for vagueness. And that's the biggest issue here is, so I can be given a citation for cutting my grass, is that correct? Okay. Somebody can be given a violation for yelling at their kid to not cross the road when the car is coming, correct? Okay, so the whole ordinance should be struck down for, for vagueness, okay? And I understand development and I understand what you have to do to get people to buy. I understand there's a huge investment and it's, it keeps you up at night hoping that people are going to buy. It's a huge market and these people living there may not be a fit for the lake. And I guarantee there's a hundred real estate agents that will find them a better spot, not by the point. And I guarantee there's a lot of people that would love to be in those places and be right there and hear the music, be part of the lake community. I would just grant the variance and then revisit it and check out what everybody else's is violating just by living normal life. The, the ordinance should be struck down maybe for vagueness. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Allen? That is it. All right, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Sure.
I just need maybe thirty seconds to a minute. And I want to mention to what Dwayne brought up about the sixteen Saturdays in the summer. Lake Gaston is over fifty years old. It has had a total of four restaurants on the lake in fifty-plus years. Seventy-five percent of our revenue is created from May through September. There's a reason why we don't have entertainment in the off-season. Many people aren't here. I can't pay a band two thousand dollars and have twenty people show up. The numbers don't work that way. We have to make our money in the summer, period, or we don't survive and we don't exist and neither does any other restaurant that is on the lake. So that is why we, we pack as much as we can into the summer. And remember, we've gone from fifty-five, sixty days down to about twenty-five and which, and some of those are on Sundays. So four restaurants on the lake in over fifty years and, but that is why we have to do it in the summer. Seventy-five percent of revenues are created from May through September at my restaurant and my guess is the other restaurants on the lake. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'm going to yield to Commissioner Pierce to answer a question to, I think, you had wanted to direct some questions to the staff.
No, they answered it. So Mr. Barber and, no, yeah, Mr. Barber and Mr. Cooley, they answered my question, which was basically, you know, are they okay with limitations on the variance that was received? So they answered my question. Oh, for the county, county attorney, so they were willing to accept the variance with conditions, meaning the decimal levels. So tonight, I know we were giving direction, we could either accept, we could deny, we could approve, we could deny, or we could do it with restrictions. Would that be considered one of the restrictions that we are able to do or what are the restrictions that we could approve? I guess it's more some of my questions, without it having to go back or if it's not accepted, whatever the case is.
Thank you, Commissioner Pierce. So County Manager Jones did a good job of giving, County Manager Jones did a good job of giving the options in your handout. One is to deny the permit altogether. One is to approve the temporary permit or to approve the permit with conditions. And the conditions could include minimizing or limiting the days. It could include limiting or minimizing the days or the decimal levels. Just a point of clarity, the last permit, I believe, in, not last year, but the year before last, that was granted, did have decimals, but everyone before that had no decimal limit. I just wanted to make, because I would say it several times. So that, those are the parameters that you can limit, the decimal or the number of days that are requested.
Got it, thanks.
All right, ladies and gentlemen of the board, is there any more questions, concerns from anyone that has spoken up to this point? Thank you. We will conclude this portion of the public hearing when it comes to the variance for the point. We're going to move on to item number three, which is consider approval of economic development incentive to project YEP totaling three million, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven zero six and to be paid back over ten years.
Is there anything else you want to say?
Yes, if that's okay.
Sure.
I do, I did just want to clarify, based on a comment, I want to make sure everyone is aware, these are full-time positions with health benefits and other benefits, okay? So there is a, I just want to clarify that they are full-time jobs.
Ms. Duncan, I'm sorry, did you interrupt you? Is the sheriff back there? Thank you. Please continue.
Thank you. And I, I want to also apologize to Todd Wiens, our, the Norlina plant manager is here and was here during the poll. I just was, did not see him earlier, so I want to recognize Todd and if it's okay, I don't know if he wants to say.
Yes, please, absolutely, Todd, if you.
Todd, do you have anything you want to add or, not to put you on the spot, but sure, would you come up, Todd, would you come up to the microphone and, just because it's the way we, the way we have it streaming?
Thank you. Thank you for your time. With this, just a, a quick statement from, from Glenn Raven, as far as I want to thank Charlotte Duncan and the board for their efforts so far as we, we're pursuing this, this opportunity. And Glenn Raven is very appreciative of Warren County's indication of support for this project. This is encouraging and will be a consequential consideration as the company works toward a final decision regarding this project. There are a number of details which have to be worked through and other commitments which must be affirmed before the company can make a final decision. That decision and any announcements regarding this project will come at a later date. And so on that, that's a, a general statement. I'm not authorized to say anything else at this time and the process has to go through and I think everybody understands that you follow processes. So thank you for your time and I appreciate your consideration and I'd really like to, again, thank Charlotte for her efforts so far.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And I also would like to, yeah, if you want to sit down, you can. So I also want to acknowledge the chair of our Warren County Economic Development Commission, Dr. Ray Spain is here. And with my recommendation tonight, I also bring to you a recommendation from the EDC board. They did vote unanimously at their June twenty-twenty-one meeting to recommend this local package to you for approval. So my recommendation tonight, in order to secure project YEP for Warren County, the recommendation includes offering a local incentive package of ten annual tax grants of sixty percent of the company's new full tax liability. And this would include any local match needed for state grant applications that may be made for this project. And the local package would also include waiving up to a hundred and fifty thousand in county building and inspection fees.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. Dr. Spain, would you like to add anything? I would recognize you while you're here, sir. Yeah, we would definitely appreciate that.
I just wanted to add my thanks to Charlotte for, for the work she's done. I think she did an excellent job of presenting this project and all the factors that's involved. I know she's worked very closely with the state in this incentive package and it's not unusual when you're competing for economic development projects to have incentive packages. And sometimes those make the difference as to whether or not you, you're able to secure new industry, new jobs. And, and so I'm, would certainly endorse the recommendation that we made to the Board of Commissioners and the recommendation that she's making tonight to, to approve this incentive package. I've been on Economic Development Commission for a number of years and, and we've talked every year about jobs. It's been one of our top priorities is to secure more jobs for, for our county. And, and now we have an opportunity and, and sometimes these opportunities don't come along too often. And I think we have to be aggressive. We've got a good partner, Glenn Raven, we've worked with them in the school system and it's awfully encouraging when you have an industry that's currently in your county that want to expand, because it says a lot about the confidence they have in the county, in the community, in the school system. They know they can find qualified workers and, and so I would certainly encourage this board to approve this incentive package. And also would ask that you keep your fingers crossed, your toes crossed and whatever else you need to do, so that we can do something that's going to be very good for our community for a good number of years in the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Spain. That's it? Thank you.
Unless you have any questions for me, that's, that's all I got.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to ask the board to entertain a motion for approval of item number three.
One of, one of the question, did you, you added something else to number three that you, did you not?
That, the clarification for the recommendation is, and this is in the, for item number three, is that the, we did give you a dollar amount based on the projected investment, but the clarification for item number three, not item number four, is that it's a tax grant of sixty percent of the tax liability. And the, and the, and the waiver of the building and inspection.
Okay, right. I think that's what we're trying to make sure we include in the, in motion.
Correct, yes, yes. If you, yeah, in my memo that I have in your folder, in the manila folder, the recommendation is at the bottom. Sorry, I know you've got a lot of papers on your table this evening.
So this is what I'm going to do. The board is going to entertain a motion for the recommendation of Warren County Economic Development, Development Director recommends approval in the incentive package to assist in securing project YEP for Warren County. The recommendation includes offering a local incentive package of ten annual tax grants of six percent of the company's new full tax liability. This tax grant includes any local match needed for any state grant applications that may be made for this project. The local package also includes a waiving up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in county building and inspection fees. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. So ladies and gentlemen of the board, that is the recommendation as far as offering the motion, please.
Okay, so if I have this correct, y'all bear with me. What you have listed for item three, in addition to a hundred and fifty thousand?
That's correct, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. I move that we approve the economic development incentive to project YEP totaling three million, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and six dollars be paid back over ten years in addition to include wavering up to a hundred and fifty thousand in county building and inspection fees. Now, did I miss? Okay, I'll accept that.
Okay.
Pay. House. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Second.
All right, it's been properly motioned by Commissioner Hunt, second by Commissioner Pierce, that we approve item number three as been presented and stated. Is there any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, we're gonna consider item number four, and this is to consider approval application, I'm sorry, application for the NC Commerce Building Reuse Grant for Project YEP with a match of up to $25,000 and authorize the county manager to execute the documents. The board will entertain a motion for approval for item number four.
And I would just like to add, we have an updated memo where it's approve a resolution and make the application for the building reuse grant.
Okay. You've heard the request.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the resolution and making an application to NC Commerce for the Rural Building Reuse Grant included a match up to $25,000 and authorize the county manager to execute the necessary documents.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Pierce, second by Commissioner Baker, that we approve item number four as presented and stated. Is there any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion is carried. Item number five, and this is consider approval or denial of permit for the temporary variance from the noise ordinance for the point. The board entertain a motion for approval or recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the permit for temporary variance from the noise ordinance for the point with a decimal reading not to exceed ninety decibels.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Pierce that we approve the, the permit variance for the noise ordinance for the point at ninety, I think you said ninety decimals?
Yes.
Ninety decimals. It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Pierce and has been seconded by Commissioner Powell. Is there any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion is carried. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to say something about that, and this is directed to both the board, is that we have to do, we have to set a standard when it comes to this noise ordinance in this county. We're gonna have to revisit that and just handle that because we have to set the standard here in the county as far as the policies that the people live by. And if we have not done that, then neighbor against neighbor, this is what happens. So I'm looking forward to addressing the noise ordinance in the near future. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna move on to item number six, which is consider approval of the fiscal year 2122 budget. Item six one is approval of departmental reorganization. Mr. Jones, do you want to say anything about that, or we've said enough and we can move on?
Unless you all have some questions, we just discussed them.
The board entertain a motion for approval for six one.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the departmental reorganization.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Pierce, excuse me, Commissioner Baker, and second by Commissioner Powell, that we approve six one as presented and stated. Is there any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion carries. Six two, which is approval, six point two is approval of reclassification request, position, description, and fiscal year 2122 pay plan. Board entertain a motion for approval. Let me get some clarification. Ms. Duncan, I gotta do this individually. Do I have to do these individually? Okay, all right, continue on. All right, six two for approval.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the reclassification request, position, descriptions, and FY 2122 pay plan.
Second.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Pierce, second by Commissioner Baker, that we approve six two as presented and stated. Is there any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion passed. Six three, approval of fiscal year 2122 fee schedule for emergency medical service. The board entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the fiscal year 2122 fee schedule for emergency medical service.
Second.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Pierce, that we approve item six three as presented and stated. Is there any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion carries. Six four is adoption of the fiscal year 2122 Warren County budget ordinance, and Mr. Jones, light recognition, but, sir.
Sure, thank you, thank you, Chair. I would just like to add that the number for the budget ordinance for fiscal year 22 is $36,543,135.
Thank you, sir. Board entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Hunt, second by Commissioner Powell, that we approve our Warren County budget ordinance, which is six four. Is there any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion is carried. Six five, approval of fiscal year 2127 five-year capital improvement plan. Board entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Hunt, that we approve item six five as presented and stated. Is there any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion carries. Item number seven, consider approval resolution authorizing amendment to the interlocal agreement for the regional stepping-up initiative in Franklin, Grammer, Halifax, Vance, and Warren Counties. Board entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Powell, that we approve item number seven as presented and stated. Is there any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion is approved. Item number eight, consider approval of capital project ordinance for Heritage Mulch Water Projecting Use Industrial Development Fund Grant awarded of $115,000. Board entertain a motion for approval.
Would you read that again, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number eight is consider approval of capital project ordinance for Heritage Mulch Water Project Using Industrial Development Fund Grant awarded of $115,000.
So moved.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Hunt, that we approve. Item number eight is presented and stated. Is there any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. Post nay. Motion is carried. Ladies and gentlemen, before we, that concludes our agenda for tonight. Right now, if there is any other business that needs to come before the board at this time, please let it be known. Hear none, we hereby adjourn. Thank you for coming out.